I want to talk about a case we did, case number 2037, 30 Town Hill Street, which Commissioner Duca sent out emails and the clerk to make sure we all got, I guess people didn't get, they got locked out of the last meeting. And I'm going to ask each one of yous that were on that case, if you heard or you read anything in that, all those emails, that would have changed your mind on your vote. Mr. Cavares, did you read them all? Mr. Cavares?
There's nothing there that would change my vote right now.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing would have changed my vote, but I would have added the condition above the dust.
All right, we can probably put that in, I talked to the commissioner about that, we'll put that in. Take care of the dust problem, make sure stuff's wetted down. Mr. Chin?
Yes, nothing in there would change my vote on my mind.
And Aikens, I've read them back and forth, and nothing is going to change my mind. So our vote is what it is. Mr. Ray Dell is not in the meeting tonight, and even if we did vote, it'd still be a four to one if he had to change his mind. So saying that, I want everyone out there to know that we've read these. And Mr. O'Brien would like to put in there the dust problem. What I do understand is there are going to be no chipping over there. So it's not going to be like they did, I guess, the last time, there was some chipping going on out there. So they're not going to do that. And if anyone out there has any complaints at all about this whole project, this gets filed tomorrow, and you still have a 20-day appeal period if you want to appeal this project. You have 20 days to appeal. After that, they'll get their permits, and then we'll, if there's anything, if it's not appealed, then they get their permits. If you don't like anything that's up there, you can call the office down here, and we'll get someone out there to take a look if you have some complaints. All right, so that is taken care of for tonight. And could I have a motion to please read the minutes of the, to waive the minutes, Mr. Cavares, the last meeting?
Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of the meeting of August 25.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set. Yeah, now, why don't we swear in each case that, okay, Mr. Cavares, as we do each case, because if we do everyone, then we're not going to know who did, who didn't. So we can grab the people that, I know your mic's way down, Mr. Cavares, I can hardly hear you when you're talking, I hope you can turn it up some. Okay, so let's go to new business. Case number ZBA 2032. Richard Nygen for special permit variance floodplain finding to subdivide the parcel to create two parcels with a single family home remaining on one parcel and construct three townhouse-style residences on the new created parcel, numbered 125, 135 Arlington Street. Counselor, are you here? Counsel Fleming? Rob?
Yes. Thank you, members of the board, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming. I do represent the applicant, Mr. Richard Nguyen, regarding his proposal at 125 to 135 Arlington Street.
All right, I'm going to hold you right there one second.
Sure.
Who wants to speak on this issue, for or against? We have to do a star nine to let us know. If you're on video, yeah, why don't you do it? Jonathan, go ahead.
Sorry, this is the, um, sorry.
Hold on.
Can you just mute yours? All right, so if you are looking to speak, we need to, you can do it one of three ways. If you are on a phone call, it is star nine, that'll do a virtual hand raise. If you're on a laptop or an iPad, open up your participants list, and there should be a virtual hand raise button. If that is still confusing, use the chat and chat directly to the host. It'll go directly to me, let me know your name and what you were going to be speaking, either in favor of or opposed, so that we can organize you in a manner that fits the meeting well. Thank you.
Okay. So who wants to speak, either way, anyone? I am muted.
Sorry.
How many people are going to speak? Well, maybe we'll have to do one at a time or something. They're saying people don't understand, it's getting bizarre. All right, Counselor, go ahead, as they come on, we'll just swear them in.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So to give the board some sense of where this property is, this is at the end of Arlington. Arlington runs from Beale Street by the fire station all the way down. This is at the other end, and this lot is really right behind the Wendy's, Wendy's Restaurant. So again, it is a, it's a 15,000 square foot parcel. And important to note, this is actually, on the, with the registry of deeds, it's actually described as two different parcels, a 10,000 square foot lot and a 5,000 square foot lot. But certainly has merged because of same ownership of both these lots over the years. It is located in a business B zoning district, and it's currently improved by a non-conforming, single-family residence, which will remain on one of the parcels, the 5,000 square foot parcel. As the chairman had said, Mr. Nguyen is proposing to subdivide, or kind of re-subdivide this parcel to create these, these same parcels, 5,000 square feet, which will be improved by this existing single family. And a second parcel containing about 10,000, 10,000 square feet. Just want to let the board know, with me this evening are both our engineer, Sean Hardy, I think most of you know Mr. Hardy, and our architect is Devon Riley-Marini from Off and Chewen Associates is with us, they would like to present as well. So on the 10,000 square foot parcel, my client is proposing to construct three townhomes, three, three-bedroom townhomes on that parcel. I had initial conversations with the planning department, and we actually essentially turned this building so it would indeed front Arlington. The original proposal was a little bit different, but we, we thought it fit better with the site itself to have it front and face Arlington Street on that end there. We, you know, we tried to, you know, place it in a way where there's a single drive to the rear of the property, which will be access to two-car garages for each of these units to the rear of the property. That kind of allowed us to maintain a nice yard in the front. And also, even though we have a drive coming in the rear, there's a 40-foot wide strip of grass in the back as well. So as I said, each, each residence will include, I think, three bedrooms, two and a half bathrooms, and the two-car garage underneath. This is within a, this property is within a floodplain coastal storm flowage. We have, we appeared before Conservation Commission on June 9th and did receive an order of conditions, you know, from the commission back in, back in June. We are before this, this board to request some dimensional relief for the construction of these three townhomes, as well as a special permit, because it is indeed, you know, in a floodplain coastal storm. I don't want to take too much time away from Mr. Hardy and Ms. Marini, so I'm going to let Sean kind of talk a little bit about some of the engineering and what he's proposed on this to kind of retain some of any stormwater runoff, but I'll let him expand on that. So Sean?
Okay, thank you. As Attorney Fleming said, this had gone through a couple of renditions, and we went before the Conservation Commission specifically with stormwater and flooding to be those concerns. The grading, we're not proposing to really change the grades as far as over the existing conditions, just more or less minor grading to reroute. We're proposing a stormwater system of 14 cul-de-sac chambers that can provide about, it's just over 2,000 cubic feet of stormwater storage. And we're proposing to take roof leaders and pipe them directly into those, as well as a trench drain at the end of the driveway, so runoff is co-chuting down the driveway out into the roadway. So we're proposing to collect that and, as much stormwater as we can. I think that's the big thing as far as, I know it's a land subject to coastal storm flowage, so at least as far as with Conservation Commission goes, there wasn't really a performance standard, but we felt as though if we added this much, like I said, 2,000 cubic feet of storage capacity for stormwater, we were improving the situation.
Okay. Counsel?
Okay, thank you, Sean, appreciate that. And I don't, I don't see Devon Riley-Marini from Off and Chew's office. Devon, are you with us? Right, I think, I think she might have, she might have had a little bit of trouble getting on. We were exchanging emails, so I'm not sure if she was able to get on for this hearing.
Well, just the first couple minutes, we had a problem with it.
So what I'd like to do, if I could, I'm going to just pull up plans and share my screen with everybody so you can see what's being proposed here. Hopefully I can do this.
Are there an extra charge for this tonight, Counselor?
I'll do my best, I'm, I'm an attorney, so technology is not my thing, really.
I know, you're good at billing, I get it.
Oh, come on. So hopefully everybody can see this, if I did it right. So this is just a cover page here. So as Sean was, as Sean Hardy was discussing, this is our, this is our site plan. So we have kind of incorporated together our existing conditions and proposed. You see the single family here with garage that will stay. This is the 5,000 square foot lot. This is our 10,000 square foot lot here with the three townhomes, drive. Within this driveway, we have some water infiltration, and then garage is here. And again, as I had talked about a little bit, we've kind of maintained a pretty good landscape, buffering these, these sides, as well, as well as the front. Believe it or not, I'm sure some of the members might have driven down to Arlington this end, and it's a little bit in disrepair. But funny enough, there's actually curbing and a curb cut exactly where this driveway is going to be. I don't know, I can't explain that, but it exists, existing today. And my client will have to repair just a little bit of the roadway here, just for access to the property. So architecturally, so we have the garages in the back, so this is our drive here. Garage is for two vehicles. Everything is built, this area here is built outside of the floodplain, so a little bit raised. This is just crawl space here. So this is kind of a half-story above the floodplain before you get up to the next one. First floor of each of these units is here, kind of an open floor plan for each of the, of the townhomes. And then we have, excuse me, this is a second floor, so this is where our bedrooms are and bathrooms as well. Little bit of, some elevations here as well, so two-car garages here. And just side elevations as well. So that's, that's my architectural talk, so I don't know if anybody has any questions for us.
If you could go over the landscape in which you got there, just explain to whoever's living around them might want to hear about that.
Yeah, so, I mean, obviously landscape is very important to any proposal. So I think the way we, we positioned these on here, yes, there's some, some drive and asphalt, you know, that will be, and this was discussed with Conservation as well. And within this driveway will be some, some water infiltration there. But really good buffer, you know, in the back here, which is very, probably the most important. I think this side here is, is a commercial use, I believe. So, but still a pretty good landscape here, the front as well. And then here, you have Wendy's on really, their parking lot and things on that side of the street as well. So I think the most important were, you know, here and here for a nice, a nice buffer between properties.
Do you got a six-foot vinyl fence in the back?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any questions for the board members?
I have none this time.
The only question I have is, is that area down there, does it have a history of floods? Or is it just in the zone?
It real, it, it has, you know, there's, I spoke to the construction liaison, because there were some, you know, even my own client had, you know, had advised me that there were indeed, there has indeed been some flooding down there. So I actually reached out to the city of Quincy. I was kind of related to the construction liaison, and as the, as the board knows, the city has a plan over many years. So there is a plan to have a pumping station in that area at some point. So that was really, again, this is coastal storm, so it's ocean, you know. But so our, what we wanted to be able to do is try to handle, you know, any, any runoff, you know, stormwater runoff from this site, which we've done. Now, again, jurisdiction, coastal storm, that is not typically required to have any retention on site. But engineering with the city is a little bit adamant about that, so we proposed that as well, so not, not adding or exacerbating those conditions down there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chin?
I have no questions yet.
I have no questions right now. Mr. Frank?
No questions at this point, thank you.
Thank you, and that's it, right, yes. Okay, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Anyone want to speak in favor? Mark Sullivan, you want to speak in favor? Mark, you up?
Oh, sorry, this is Devon from Chew and Company.
You want to speak in favor? Oh, that's, okay.
She's our architect. I think she does.
Our computer laptop was logged in as another designer at our firm. That's why you couldn't see.
So, yeah, so Devon, I talked a little bit about the architectural. If board members have specific questions for Devon, you know, certainly, you know, feel free to ask Devon, if you want to add anything as well, you know, certainly feel free.
Go ahead, Devon.
Oh, you, you did a pretty good job.
Thank you, Devon.
Anything else you want to add, Devon?
Um, no, it seems like he covered pretty much everything. When you enter the ground floor, there's the main entry off Arlington, and then the carport in the back, and then you're still in the flood zone when you enter on that level. So the next level up, that little sitting area, is actually the first living space that is on, yeah, is able to be living space. That's why it's kind of wonky, but it's open to the bottom, so it's kind of like a mezzanine lofted looking area. That's about it.
All right. Any, any questions?
No.
No?
No.
Anyone want to speak in favor? Annika Stoughton, do you want to speak in favor, are you unopposed?
I just have a question. If I'm looking at the right property, it looks like there's a lot of work in the street that needs to be done, has that been accounted for by the city? What cost needs to be incurred by the city to put this in?
He said he's got a, he's going to fix in front of the property, he's going to fix that part in front of the property.
The road?
Anything further up? I don't know, the city, uh, did, uh... Is there anything else? John Rutherford.
John Rutherford, 62 Grandwall Road.
Should we swear him in? Should we swear him in?
I'm sorry.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, John Rutherford, 62 Grandwall Road. Uh, my question is this, I think it was just answered, but the driveways and the garage doors are in the back? Correct. Okay, from me looking at that picture, if a car's going in the back there, the turning radius to get into that first garage would be like an insane U-turn. And if people are parked behind there, I see that as a complete disaster. I think 100% the garage doors should be in the front. I don't think you should have lights in the backyard, so I think it is good new growth. You're making new growth out of swampland down there. It really is wet down there. But I doubt to say that, I don't understand. This reminds me of the building right next to my torre depatzi. You drive behind there, and it, they got giant garage doors, but you can't drive a big vehicle back there. So I'm not sure if it was to maximize the square foot above the floodline. I would also recommend, I'm not sure what they said at Conservation, but let's say if we do approve these projects that are in the flood zone, I would like to make sure that they're three feet, maybe even four feet above the current levels, because we're due to get new flood maps out, and flood levels are rising. So we have to prepare, and you know, they should definitely make sure there, there shouldn't be any living space, because I guarantee, I grew up in that neighborhood. I went to Montclair School, I went to Wendy's, the first day was open, and I have a good friend, Mark Smith, that lives right on that street, 143 Arlington Street. I think his brother still lives there.
Right.
You know, I, this still has to go to planning too, so when it goes to planning, I would also suggest it would be nice to put a new sidewalk in there, the short sidewalk going all the way up and to pay for that, and that would be a nice thing for the neighbors, because having three new families in there is going to have more people walking when there used to be no one walking there. But look into that garage thing, because look into this turning radius, do the math, and see if it can possibly be done. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else, want to speak in favor? All that part of the hearing closed, I have a letter here from the DPW. September 1st, 2020, 125 Arlington Street, case number ZBA 20-32. We reviewed the reference project, our comments are as follows. The project location is subject to flood even in a one, one-year storm event. The city has placed pumps permanently in the area to eliminate the water from any rainstorm event. The applicant should provide a narrative on how to handle the floods and how the water can be eliminated. The proposed entrance for the development may not be accessible during a heavy rainy storm. Install survey monuments to donate the subdivided lots. The monuments shall be set by a professional land surveyor. Provide plan denote the proposed sediment and erosion control procedures to implement during construction. Will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Number five, the sewer mains in that part of Arlington Street are in very bad condition. There are frequent complaints regarding blockage, backflow of the sewers. The applicant should consider installing a new main with manholes on this part of Arlington Street and make the connections to manhole and not central out. Number six, existing utilities have shown settlements. We highly recommend conducting soil investigation to access the site condition and design criteria. Seven, upon completion of this project, as-built plans need to be submitted along with a digital file. Any further information, please advise. All that part of the hearing closed. Is there anyone opposed or undecided that would like to speak? Opposed or undecided? Any hand, second call, opposed or undecided? Third call, opposed or undecided? All that part of the hearing closed. And I was looking at, at these turning radiuses, and it's 36 feet. So to me, it's more than enough to spin down and turn around, and that's just my opinion to get into that first one. Uh, it's three extra units, it's all brand new. He's going to have to bring up the storage and do some stuff down there to build these units. So I'm going to say he's going to spend a few more bucks than maybe than he thought when he saw those conditions in the DPW, but with those put in there, I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavares?
No, Mr. Chairman, that property has been discussed about being developed for many years, maybe 20 years or so. I'm happy to see someone coming forward and cleaning it up a little bit, because right now it does look terrible. I'll be voting, incorporating the comments of the DPW, I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Mr. Cavares. Mr. O'Brien?
I agree with Mr. Cavares that the improvements to the drainage systems down there and the sewer system, and on-site handling of any water on the site itself, makes me think that that'll be an improvement to the end of the street there. So I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Chin?
Just as long as the, the engineering is, is as required, and the water conditions are addressed satisfactorily, I think it's good for the neighborhood, it's, it's going to be an improvement. No opposition tonight, apparently, so I would be voting in favor.
Uh, Mr. Frankel?
I agree with Mr. Chin. Some of the engineering comments seem to be suggestions. I would like to see those incorporated as, as part of the order to approve this, whatever it is that the engineering thinks that should be done, be it sewer mains, et cetera, are done as part of the development.
Okay, Mr. Cavares, do I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We'll take a roll call and a vote?
Matter number 20-32, Richard Webb for a social permit variance floodplain finding to subdivide the parcel to create two parcels with a single home remaining on one parcel and to construct three townhouse-style residences on the newly created parcel on the premises number 125, 135 Arlington Street. I make a motion to grant the requested relief and incorporate...
Second.
Incorporating... Charlie, wait. Incorporating the comments of the DPW.
Second.
Second, on the motion, seeing none, all in favor, we're going to take a roll call, Madam Court?
Marty Aikens?
Yes.
Michael Vaeus?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes, in favor.
And Jeff Frankel?
In favor, yes.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Further on to tonight's business, ZBA case number 2038. Don't encourage for variance to replace the front stairs in the residence with a small entry with the roof on the premises number 20 Unity Street. It's the applicant representative present.
Mr. Chairman, Rob Fleming, Fleming and Fleming. I did, I did assist Mr. Segru on the filing application. He may, I don't see him here, he was going to be present this evening, I don't see him, but I'm happy to...
But if you want, he's here.
He is, okay.
Yeah, applicant?
Yes, I'm here.
Are you going to hire that guy for your lawyer?
I already did.
Already did, there you go. Mr. Fleming, you're up.
Okay, so I think this is a very, I'm hoping a very simple request here. Mr. Segru has lived at Unity Street for quite some time now with his family. The, the front stairs, no roof over them, there's many homes on that particular street, Unity Street, that have small front porches with, with roofs over them. I think, you know, he's trying to slightly expand it, provide kind of a safer entrance to his... I think, you know, he's trying to slightly expand it, provide um, kind of a safer entrance to his home to have it roofed. Um, you know, and, and be able to, especially in, in today's times, a little more seating area outside uh, might provide him with that as well, to be able to be shielded from the elements. Um, so we're, we are requesting a variance and a finding just to build this uh, front roofed porch on the, on the front of the home. Um. And maybe Mrs. Segru wants to say a little bit as well, if he wants to expand on that.
The owner would like to speak?
I'd just like to say it'll be a big asset to the house. Uh, attractive and um, it'd be a lot safer for us.
So it's the entryway with the roof on top, so it's like a little mudroom out front?
Yes, but it won't be enclosed.
Yeah, all be enclosed, right. I have no questions. Uh, Mr. Cabeas?
No, I had none.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
And Mr. Frankel?
No questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor? Give us a notified somehow. Anyone wanna speak in favor? Second call? Anyone wanna speak in favor? Third call? Hands. No hands. Wave, do something. No hands, no? Okay, call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. Uh. September first twenty twenty, twenty Unity Street, case number ZBA twenty thirty-eight. We reviewed the above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided that like to speak? First call? Second call? Third call closed. Grab a motion, Mr. Cabeas?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in matter number twenty dash thirty-eight, Donald Sergy, for a variance to replace the front stairs of the residence with a small entry and a roof on the premises number twenty Unity Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
All the motion, CNN, all in favor. Roll call.
Chairman Akins?
Yes.
Mike Cabeas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeffrey Frankel?
Yes.
Thank you. Further on to tonight's business. South Shore, case number ZBA twenty thirty-nine, South Shore Development LLC, for variance for a four-unit subdivision for four single-family homes. New single-family home lots on the premises number twenty-two High Street. Lot one and four Patriot Lane Quincy. Is the applicant representative here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Edward Fleming. I'm here on behalf of South Shore Development LLC. And I'm joined by both Paul and Ryan Feldman, who are the principals of uh, South Shore Development. Um, this property is the subject of a, a new subdivision that was recently approved by the Planning Board on December eleventh of two thousand and nineteen. At that time, uh, and during the hearings before the Planning Board, the applicant presented a uh, request for a four-lot subdivision and was granted approval by the, by the Planning Board. And at that time, the layout of all of the homes on the site uh, fully complied with the zoning ordinance as they're uh, constructed today. Uh, since that time, the applicant has constructed the roadway uh, known as, now known as Patriot Lane. Uh, so this twenty-two High Street is now known as one Patriot Lane. Um, Patriot Lane was constructed, infrastructure uh, was, was um, installed and completed uh, to, with the exception of the electrical. Um, the entrance was clean and stabilized and handicapped ramps and sidewalks and curbing were installed. And um, the applicant's in the process of putting up fence and uh, constructing two of the uh, new single-family how, homes on um, on lots two and three. Uh, those foundations will be poured uh, next week. Um. As he was doing so, as the developer was doing so, the applicant was doing so, they, they began to finalize their house plans and they saw that there was an opportunity to reconfigure the two homes that were originally proposed for lots one and lots four. Uh, by squaring off and rig, reconfiguring those homes uh, to provide for a better footprint for the existing homes without having any negative impact on the abutting neighbors. In fact, uh, the homes as they're reconfigured will, will be no closer to the neighbors. They'll be no larger than what was initially proposed. Uh, and they'll actually be squared off so that they'll be narrower as the neighbors in the rear look at those homes. Um, so they'll have no negative impact. Um, so when, when Mr. Feldman came in to see me, uh, I recommended to Mr. Feldman that he go and speak with the neighbors uh, who abut the properties that, that we're discussing, uh, lots one and lots four. And he did so. Um, and he presented and shared the plans with those neighbors and explained to them exactly what changes were gonna be made and um, and showed them the plans as to how it would impact them. And they signed a petition, which I, I submitted with the um, to the board. And if you don't have a copy of that, I have one that I can share with you, um, if I'm allowed to share my, my screen, if that's necessary. But that petition was signed by all the abutting neighbors that were most impacted, uh, that were located on High Street. Um. To do so, reconfigure the houses, what, what uh, South Shore uh, Development is seeking is a frontage of variance, uh, of, for the, from the front setback to allow them to um, reconfigure the homes and set them twenty-one feet from this new Patriot Lane as opposed to twenty-five feet. So we're seeking four feet of front setback relief for both houses on lots one and lots four. Uh, otherwise, the dimensional requirements will, will remain the same and otherwise will be in full compliance. Uh, to be honest with you, we think that in, and I think the neighbors that were, that we shared the plans with agreed that the houses will have no negative impact then, on them at all. In fact, it will be better. The houses will be a little further away. They'll be narrower, about five to ten feet narrower, so they'll see less house. And they're no larger than what was initially proposed. So we're seeking this relief, um, and uh, requesting that the board consider this favor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I can, I have the plans that if, if uh, necessary, I can share those, that screen with the neighbors and
I, I have that here.
Okay.
We have that. Uh, it's in our package.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, is there any questions of anyone from the, from the board? I have no question. Mr. Cabeas?
I have no questions.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Mr. Hamel?
No questions.
Okay. Hamilton, Frankel's up. Uh, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this project? The relief slot? Anyone? First call? Second call? Stand nine, virtual hand raise, wave. Okay. Nothing. Okay. Third? Nobody. Call that part of the hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW. September first twenty twenty, twenty-two High Street, Patriot Lane, case number ZBA twenty thirty-nine. We reviewed the above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Anyone? Cindy Lally? You're up.
Thank you. Um, I wondered when they said that, uh, the neighbors
One minute, one minute. Uh, Mr. Cabeas, could you swear him in, please?
Yes, sir. Uh,
What's your name?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
What's your name?
Jim Lally.
Jim Lally, okay, Jim. I know it says Cindy in there and it's, I don't think it's Cindy to me, but uh, okay, you have the floor. Yeah. You have, you have the floor.
All right, I just was wondering about the signed off by all the neighbors on High Street and the no larger than proposed. Does that mean the house footprint no longer, I mean, has the exact same square footage?
I'm looking at what we have here. What we have here is they're looking for four-foot relief. And the proposed, uh, plans on the lot, if you see the lot, you wanna show, did you see the uh, the propose of the lots and how they're being laid out?
I did originally, but I don't know that, uh, now, uh, whether that's changed or not. Uh, my, my, I guess my, my issue is, uh, I would not be in favor of a larger footprint for any houses on that site.
I think there's a power thing, because the way that it's, it's like two foot bigger, but it's like there, it's like probably ten feet shorter than homes than the original. If you can see in this plan, can you put that up, Mr. Fleming? Can you put that, the proposed, and you can see the dotted line, how the homes were changed and shortened? Could you give Maxus to that? Please, John, thank you. You'd have access. I wonder if we should have like a dot somewhere we can just bang it up to, you know? Popped up, yeah.
My flag's in there. Yeah, I don't see it.
Did you get that, Mr. Fleming?
Just stand over there.
Yeah.
O'Brien, all right.
You can only see from the door frame.
Well, I'm not, yeah, I'm trying to figure out why my screen's not sharing. Here we go. Share screen, there you go, that'd be helpful.
Good.
Uh, hey. So, um.
One more click. Share screen button again, should be it.
Yeah.
He's your little brother.
I know, I think he's still here too. All right, close chair. There we go, look at that.
Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. No, he didn't do it. He didn't do it.
No.
All right, so this is a before and after, um, that was provided, that was actually prepared by my client, and as you can see, the this is the, this is the, um, the before. As you see, the houses were just longer and narrower. And all, all of that was done was really just to square them off. And this really shows how they were squared off, and by doing that, the setbacks changed from twenty-five feet on either side, then to twenty-one. But I can tell you, sir, that the, uh, the footprint's no larger. The homes were proposed to be about twenty-six hundred square feet in total size. That has not changed. So the, uh, the square footage of the homes will be no larger, and the footprint of the, uh, of the, uh, of the house will be no larger either. It will just be reconfigured in a different shape.
All right, my concern, that, that was my concern, that the house would be larger and they would be, I, uh, you know, m- more square footage. If it's the same square footage, then I guess I don't have a complaint.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? Yeah, Dominguez. You're up.
Mario? Mario?
Mario. Where is he?
He's out there on the bottom, at the side of the yard. There you go.
Mario, you're up. We don't have a picture, but can we hear you?
Mario?
Can we hear you? You have some problems there. Can you click on, uh, try to get yourself unmuted or something?
Yes.
Well, that's what I mean, his microphone might not be on. All right, I'll get back to him. Is there anyone else? Kenneth Riden?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thanks for giving me a minute or two.
Hold on, hold on one second. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Great. Um, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, uh, I live at forty-six High Street and the corner of my fence is abuts the property. I, I wasn't contacted, just for point of information. I know several of my other neighbors were not as well. Um. I have no problem with the reduction of the front yard, frontage setback in order to accommodate the squaring of the house. But I'd like the developer to consider anything else he can do on the site to reduce the runoff. It's not only surface runoff, which was measured as part of the environmental impact uh, by the developer, but we also have subsurface runoff four or five feet down. It comes along the rock that's the foundation of the hill that we're on. And all of us have at least one, if not two, sump pumps working a many days. So if there's any way the driveway could be pervious rather than impervious, whatever they can do in terms of plantings to absorb more of the water, so the flow doesn't happen all at one uh, uh, time. And then I guess I have a question of the board, and that is as they move into the home and we're delighted to have new neighbors, have Quincy grow in good ways, that's terrific. But does the current subdivision approval allow them to put, let's say, a deck that might be pervious? A patio that might be pervious, et cetera? You get the gist of my concern.
Yeah, yeah.
My, my backyard has flooded many days. I was disappointed that the planning department staff hadn't, until the first hearing, even visited the surrounding neighborhood where they would see all of the sump pump hoses you trip over on High Street. And that the, uh, water flow test was only on the surface. I'm a city planner. That's what I do at UMass. I am the director of the graduate program in urban planning, and I've been on the ZBA for twenty years in two other communities which remain unnamed. And I want you to know, I didn't have to leave there because of my
Come on, I wanna go there.
Okay, Ifega, New York, and Champagne, Illinois.
There you go.
Great places.
Yeah.
Mr. Cabeas?
Mr. Cabeas? Yes, uh, if someone wants to put patio blocks down their yard, they have that right. But not impervious.
Pervious.
Pervious.
Okay, that's good to know. How about the driveways? I know we can't require them to, but there's material that they could use that would make it more uh, pervious rather than impervious. And the same thing with landscape improvements that can absorb some of the water.
Right, right. Uh. I know if you, if you really look at these, that the, uh, the, the driveways are very small, each one of them.
That's
Just going in, it's just going to the house, that twenty-five foot, twenty-one foot like that. It's, it's, it's not going around, it's not going anywhere, it's going right to the property. Uh. So I, I think, uh, the developer would take those notes if he could do something to help you out on, uh, even more landscaping or something like that. No, he's fine. Yeah, he knows what I'm talking, oh, you're gonna unmute yourself now if you're gonna fuck. Good, all right, thank you. Mr. Dominguez, let's try this one more time. Can you hear me? Calling from a telephone. Can you get in?
Can you hear me?
Yes, there you are.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you? Can, uh, Mr. Cabeas, could you please give him a
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Dominguez, you're up.
Okay, so I'm, I have a couple of, I'm, I'm hoping this is the right platform to ask a couple of questions. Um, uh, like Kenneth said, I wasn't reached out to where literally, I believe the home will be number two, that's literally right, uh, behind our lot. Um. I'm not sure how to, but it's pretty close to our lot, which is fine. I mean, we have, we, it, it, it seems like they don't have much of a backyard close to our lot. But, um, that's fine. I was never opposed to the development. I mean, um, we're, we're in belief that, you know, uh, the developer wants to make money, the owners wanted to sell and make money. My only couple of questions were, um, uh, from the beginning talk, um, there was, there was a talk about the developer was gonna put a fence around the perimeter of the new lots for privacy. And I think now, especially nowadays with COVID, um, to see that whole, you know, machines and the loud noise without that privacy when you're outside and we're coming into the winter, I was, I was always hoping that there would be a little more privacy, so you don't see all the machinery and the, you know, the whole development being happening, which was never done, and I assumed it was supposed to be done from the early talks, um, unless I'm wrong.
Mister, uh, yeah, Commissioner, do you know anything about that? They're putting the fence up before they do any work up there?
Um, I mean, that's appropriate. Um.
The fence, and the fencing
See the neighbors? Oh, you're asking if they can put a fence up?
Or did they? Are they, are they doing that? I don't know.
I, I don't know.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fleming, do you know?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned during the presentation, they are, uh, they will be installing a six-foot privacy fence around the site now that construction is underway. Um, so they will be installing that fence, and that will be surrounding the site as, as requested.
Very good.
I believe they're doing so now, as my client indicated.
Very good.
Okay.
Dominguez, anything else?
Um, you know, no, that was, um, in terms of, oh, sorry, one last question, I, I apologize. Um, what are the construction hours? Allowed by the City of Quincy?
Seven to.
Seven to five weekdays.
Seven to five weekdays.
Nine to five weekends.
Nine to five weekends and holidays.
Got it. Seven to five on the weekdays, nine to five on the weekend.
Yeah.
Perfect, okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, I already did. You researched about it. No, I, I, I know, I just like Sundays. You know, it's a close type neighborhood, I know. Uh, Mr. Rodafell.
Hey, how you doing? John Rodafell, 62 Gramwell Road, I swear, if I have to swear again.
Now, you swayed once, that's enough.
Thank you, Mr. Cavares. Um, I just want to go back, um, Mr. Fleming, each one of these lot sizes are, um, at least 7,650 square feet, and they all have 85 square feet of frontage, I mean, 85 feet of frontage, they're all conforming in those two?
Yes, they conform, they fully conform.
So.
They're actually bigger, they're about 10,000 plus square feet.
Have we seen this project before?
No, no, this was before the planning board, because it was a, it was a subdivision, and it was.
Oh, okay, so I, so I saw this at planning before, so, I mean, after I saw the plans, I, I actually, before you close the hearing, I want to get on record, I think this is a great plan, I think we need single-family homes. I mean, after seeing, um, you know, units being put on 5,000 square feet on Arlington Street, it'd be great to have four families moving to Quincy and buying single-family homes, that's what we need right now, that's what there's demand for. So, uh, I want to get on record, I'm, I'm in favor of this, um, we're creating four lot sizes, which is, this is really good new growth. So, um, I just want to get on the record, thank you.
Thank you, John. Is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Second, third, all the party here in close. I, I think it's a real nice project, I think you did a great job, nice layout, and, uh, I think it's gonna be nice, it's gonna be nice for the city, it'll be nice for, uh, whoever buys those properties. I have no, no further questions, I'll be voting in favor, Mr. Cavares.
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, yeah, the only question I have, did we get, uh, affirmation from, um, the attorney about Mr. Riden's question about the impervible driveways?
The driveway.
Yeah, I'll have to speak with Mike, it was designed in such a fashion, Mr. Chairman and, and, um, Mr. O'Brien, that the, the water, um, it, it's, the driveways will be designed so the water will go towards the street, and they'll be addressed by the drainage that's being installed in the street. So there won't be, these, these won't run off to the neighbors' homes.
And it's, they're like 21 to 25 foot, just straight pieces of, uh, you know, right into the home, so it's not like going around back or anything.
Right.
Pretty nice. Pretty nice present.
I'll, I'll, I'll be voting in favor.
Uh, Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
And Mr. Hamel?
In favor, especially since there's gonna be a nice big privacy fence around.
Hey, do we have a motion, Mr. Cavares?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a matter number 20-39, South Shore Development LLC, for a variance for a four-lot subdivision, four new single-family house lots on the premises number 22 High Street, now known as 104 Patriot Lane, Quincy, I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Take a roll call.
Martin Aiken?
Yes.
Michael Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, one thing I want to clear up here, the last thing on. You're welcome, Counselor. The ZBA case number 20-47, New Singular Wireless PCS for special permit on 3 Dorchester Street. Your butters list just came in, so we have to re-advertise it, and we're gonna move it to October 13th. Have a motion, please, Mr. Cavares.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, number, case number 20-47, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, for a special permit to install wireless communication facility consisting of the colorization of six parcel antennas, two panel antennas per section, with associated equipment on the premises number 3 Dorchester Street, I make a motion to, on the T U D hearing on October 13th.
Second.
Uh, take a roll call.
Martin Aiken?
Yes.
Michael Cavares?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Back to Regal Auto Business, ZBA case number 2041, Michael Keane, for variance to construct 1 1/2 story attached garage in the premise number 87 Madison Ave. The applicant and their representative here.
Yes.
You have the floor, sir.
I am. I am. Yep, this is Pat Fisher, can you hear me?
Yep, we got you, Pat.
Okay, great, um. Alright, am I sharing that okay?
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, this is the, um, this is the existing single-family home on Madison Avenue. Um, it is on a very steep sloping site, it slopes left to right down. Uh, the driveway is on the right-hand side. There is a very small, unusable one-car garage that exists under the house. Um, and Mr. Keane can't actually get his car into that garage.
No.
No. Uh, he has a, he has a truck, he's in the construction industry. Um, he can't get the truck in there. Um, so he would like to build this, um, one-car garage, it's probably like a 1 1/2 car garage on, on the side in the rear of his house.
Gonna be a single, single, one-story?
Well, no, it's 1 1/2 story, it's, there's going to be a room above the garage set in under the roof. Now, let me see, I've got the other screen here, there we go. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Yeah, so that's the garage on the bottom, which is equivalent to the basement level, excuse me?
It's two stories, right?
Um, well, it's, um.
Well, with the domes and everything, yeah.
Yeah, right, so the, um, so the garage is at the basement level of the house, and then that half-story, which will be a, you know, a half a room, it's the equivalent of the first floor of the house.
What do they do with that room?
Uh, he just wants to have a home office. Uh, again, like everybody else, they're working from home, the kids are schooling from home, they just need more space in the house. Um, so I think it's just a home office is what he has planned.
Is that a single-family home or two-family?
No, that's a single-family. Yeah, let me, um, let me try and get this to move. Okay. There's the side elevation. You can see the existing one-car garage that he can't actually get the car into.
Yeah.
So there's the, there's the plan at the driveway level.
Yeah. It's just, yeah, it's a double now, right?
Yeah. And there's the, uh, there's the room that will be above, we're showing it with couches, but I, I think he plans on using it as a, a home office.
Mm-hmm. It's, uh.
And he wants to put a pool in the backyard also, which I, I, he's not looking, he's not seeking any, any relief for the pool.
Right, is that a single door that looks like two doors?
Uh, I'm sorry, which, um.
It's like 18 feet, it's 18'4", so is it two 9'4"? Is that what, well, yeah, two 9'4", nevermind.
Oh, okay.
Nine, alright, I got it.
Well, it's a.
Yeah, the sitting room, I got it. I couldn't, when I'm reading this, it had a, it looked like a tent.
Yeah, that's a, it's a 10-foot wide garage door, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, but it's 18 feet, so.
That's the whole, the whole building is 18 feet? The whole addition?
Yeah, it's, uh, 18'4", correct.
Correct, yeah, and then he said a, he has a, a man door to the left and a garage door to the right.
Yeah, so it's only a 10-foot door?
Correct.
So it's a single-car garage, it's a single, right?
Correct.
Oh, alright. But I, I'm looking at this and I'm saying, this doesn't even make sense to me, 18'4" and that's, okay, I got it.
Oh, okay.
It's the same, the same, those says 10 feet, and then the 18'4" is up top, but it's in the bottom, really.
Right.
The wrong, it's the wrong, like, it's, it's put right under the tent, alright. Alright, I have it, any questions?
I have none at this time.
I have one, is there access to the upstairs room from the house?
Let's see, yeah, probably, right?
Yes. Yeah, you, you, you go from the kitchen out to the enclosed porch, and then from the enclosed porch into that room.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Was he coming off that wall, three, three feet?
Yeah, I think it's three, 3.2 in the back corner and 3.7 on the front corner of the garage.
Alright, uh, so, Mr. Cavares, any questions?
I have none at this time.
Mr. Chin? Mr. Chin? Is he muted? What happened, Mr. Chin?
Unmuted, Russ.
Alright, we're all set.
Okay, I'm unmuted now, thank you. I just, um, I'm a little bit concerned about a 3.2 side setback creation here. Uh, it seems really, really tight to me. And if it's just gonna be a one-car garage, it's gonna have to be 18 feet, 4, 4 inches.
Well, I think it's more for the top floor than, than anything, I think it's more for their room, their sitting room upstairs.
Yeah, I, I understand the, uh, the, the butter next door doesn't have any problem with, uh, with the project, I'm just, um, creating a three-foot, 2-inch side setback.
So you want five?
I'm just expressing my concern about the, uh.
Oh, no, no, I know, I know, you want a little more, you want, you want, you want another 1.3, 1.7 added on, is that what you're looking for, or is?
I will, um, I would like to hear from the other, uh, board members before I opine.
Okay, sounds great. Uh, Mr. Hamel?
Well, considering the, uh, configuration and the slope of that street is not a bad use, but you're right, uh, Russ, it, it's a little tight.
I think there's enough room to paint. We don't have to use the paint yet.
If the paint is not too thick, you're right.
For a very thin painter.
There you go, there you go, Charlie. Okay, uh, let's see what's going on here then, alright, uh. Is there anyone, uh, that wants to speak in favor of this project? Hands up, John Rodafell. John, you're up.
My back, um. John Rodafell, 62 Gramwell Road. Uh, my question is, um, I, I don't think it's bad, um, I mean, I don't think adding a garage with a little bit of living space is, is bad. I've been talking about this for years myself, but, um, there's no doubt that if it's gonna be, if they're gonna present it as a one-car garage, you do not, not need 18 feet, they can make it 2 feet lower. I don't really like that door that's in front, because it kind of looks like that could maybe just be an Airbnb, they rent it to someone, and they go there and they go upstairs, you know, make it so the garage is only a garage downstairs. Let's not give them living space downstairs on top of it, because we don't get charged tax money for that downstairs money. We're gonna get tax money for that upstairs space, definitely, but that downstairs space, you know, I, I think going over 2 feet, I think Mr. Chin made a great point, um, I think going, you know, I think asking for a second floor there, like, the way they designed that was really asking for a lot. So, I mean, if you want to go two floors, go over a little bit more to the left.
Go up, everybody, go up, go up, everybody. Okay, let's relax.
Yeah.
John, finished?
Yeah, yeah, I am, I am, that's my point, but otherwise, I think that, um, you know, um, you know, families are growing and, um, you, you need space, so, uh.
John, there's no living space that I saw in the basement, just a set of stairs to go up. So I don't, I, I, what I saw, I didn't see any living space downstairs, just a car and a set of stairs going up. And they're gonna have, of course, if he wants to put his lawnmower and stuff in the back, he could do that.
I'm just saying, a 16-foot garage, 16-foot garage, single-car garage is a big garage with 4 X or feet, like a 12-foot garage is a standard car garage.
I hear, I hear you.
So, I, I don't know, it's about the neighbor, if the neighbor doesn't care, but I'm gonna say, if I was, if I was the neighbor buying that house from that guy who lives next door, I would care.
Oh, you wouldn't buy it?
Thank you, John.
Can I address the question of the man door?
Well, I mean, it's a door just to go in, so you can walk upstairs if you want, or you come out of the garage.
Yeah, well, it's actually code required, that's our only, uh, egress from that level, so we have to have a man door.
No, I like the door, it's, it's, it's not, anyway, it looks nice, I like it, and it's, and I hear what a few of them are saying. You know, it's 18 something wide, it could be, you know, 16, and, and there's still plenty of room to walk around and get around there, and there's still room for his lawnmower and snowball in the back too. Uh. Is there anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? All the party here in close, anything from the D P W?
Um, yeah, I can't reach you, this is no comment.
Oh, no, I don't have it. Oh, maybe I put it on top. Oh, there you go, sneaky. I have a letter here, it's December 1st, 2020, 87 Madison Ave, case number ZBA 2041, review above reference project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Third call? All the party here in close. I don't know, guys, uh, I mean, you can always shorten that 2 feet if you wanted to, and give them 5 feet on the side, so, so they can get by, if they got something to get by with, they could. 3 foot's not a lot of room to walk by, and if you've got something going in the backyard, you have to go through the garage. Uh, and if you're gonna paint the second floor, or whatever you're gonna do on the second floor, you're gonna need 5 feet to put a ladder in the room, or you're gonna go in your neighbor's property to get up there, so. I don't think it's a bad idea making that 5 feet, uh, open, and which would be another 1.7 or something, it's not a lot. Just to bring it to like 17 something, uh, probably 17 feet instead. Uh, they still can have a 10-foot door and all that, so, uh. Mr. Chin, how do you feel?
I like, um, what you're proposing, um, Mr. Chairman, I also want to remind the board that this is still going to be a two-car garage house, because they have the other existing garage, just that he can't fit his truck in there. But perhaps another kind of vehicle could fit in there, so they will end up still with a two-car garage, even with the reduction in the, in the supply.
Uh. And who else is speaking on that, Charlie?
I'm good, um.
Okay.
Whatever Russell likes in there, it's good with me.
Yeah. Alright. Mr. Hamel, any? Yeah, I know you said something about that too.
Want to shorten it up, you want?
Either froze.
If you like to make it 5 feet, I'd be happier with it.
Alright, we can do that. You can talk to the architect, make that, just shorten it up like 1'4", so it'll be 17-foot rather. That'll work? Pat?
Yeah, I, I think we can agree to that.
Okay.
So, uh, where the, uh, where the 3.2, uh, setback is, change that to 5.
Yeah, and then wherever it comes out, you're up. Yeah, and then wherever it comes out, you're all set, right?
Five feet on the side?
Yeah, five feet in the rear.
In the rear?
Yeah, where it comes out to the smallest spots in the rear, it comes three-two.
And that's seventeen-point-four width?
Whatever it comes out to be, uh, it's like, oh, be one-ten or something, so it'd be
Shortest five feet.
Yeah, it'd be like six-to-ten or something, whatever it could be.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, anyone else set? Do we have a motion, Mr. Cavais?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Man number twenty-dash-one, uh, four, forty-one. Michael Keane, for a variance to construct a one-and-a-half-story attached garage at the premises number eighty-seven Madison Avenue. I make a motion to grant the variance with the, uh, increasing the side uh, setback from three-point-two inches of feet, sorry, to five feet.
Second.
On the motion, have a roll call vote?
Martin Akins?
Yes.
Michael Cavais?
Yes.
Carly O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, case number ZB A twenty forty-three. Guy one, dang, I apologize, for finding to enclose the existing front porch in the premise number two-forty-two Elmwood. The applicant or representative here? I don't, I didn't look.
Uh, Jim Chen needs to be now unmuted.
Jim Chen needs to be unmuted.
Yeah, it's unmuted now.
You're all set.
Um, good evening, Mr. Chen, and members of the board. Uh, my name is Jim Chen at five-eighty-five Washington Street. I'm an architect, uh, representing the owner of, uh, four, four, two-four-two Elmwood Ave. So Elmwood Ave, um, is a, uh, rez-a, rez-a zoning district, uh, it's currently a single-family owner-occupied home. Um, the owner is proposing to enclose the, uh, screen porch at the front and, uh, extend the living space, uh, living room space due to the, um, the current, uh, the existing non-conforming front yard setback, uh, we're requesting a binding for the relief. Uh, it does not change the original footprint of the home, but we will be adding, uh, approximately a hundred eighty square feet to the home, which will make the, uh, living room more comfortable for the current owner.
Yeah, and you're just gonna, you're just gonna enclose the porch and let, let it be a four-season, that's really a
Yes.
Any questions of the board members? Uh, Mr. Cavais?
Well, uh, no, I don't have any questions now.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Not at this time.
Mr. Chin?
Whether will that be a three-season porch, Jim, or heated or?
It'll be heated, uh,
Or it'll be closed and incinerated and heated?
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, and Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
No questions. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? James Heffernan, are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor.
All right, you're up.
Hi, I'm, uh, James Heffernan.
James, do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, uh, Director Butter at two-forty-eight Harvard Street, and uh, everyone in this neighborhood has single-family homes, or mostly single-family homes, that are probably all non-conforming, and updating them from nineteen-twenty-five is okay with me, so I'm in full support of these, uh, my neighbors doing this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wanna speak in favor? First call? Second call? Third call? Call it closed, I have a letter here from the DPW, September first, twenty-twenty, two-forty-two Elm Street, Elm Ave, case number ZB A twenty forty-three, review the above referenced project and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, first call? Second call? Third call closed, Mr. Cavais, could we have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The man number twenty-dash-forty-three, Guy Zhang, Guy Zhang, for finding to enclose the front, existing front porch on the premises number two-forty-two Elmwood Ave, make a motion to, uh, okay the finding.
Second.
On the motion, stand down, all in favor, take a roll call.
Martin Akins?
Yeah.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Carly O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Thank you. Furtherance, tonight's case, ZB A case twenty forty-six, Lindsay and Scott Yardley for special permanent flood pain variance to demolish the existing single-family home, construct a new single-family home on the premises number six Nut Island Ave, Quincy. Mr. Himmel's out, and Mr.
Frankel.
Frankel is in. Is the applicant or representative here?
No. Oh, yes.
Yes.
Go ahead.
We ready?
Yep, you're up.
Uh, good evening to the board. Now, this is Scott and Lindsay Yardley, we are at, uh, six Nut Island Ave in Quincy. We've been residents for fifteen years and been on Nut Island Ave for about ten years. And, um, we're very familiar with the, you know, the occasional extreme weather in the area, and certainly that goes into uh, how we're preparing to build the, the home we'd like to build. Uh, we both have twenty-plus years in, um, in construction design, uh, in the industry, and we're committed to build a, a structure that complies with the, the current building codes and FEMA regulations. And, uh, we've hired Grady Consulting out of Kingston, um, and designs by Marshall out of Cituit. And, uh, the architect is, uh, her specialty is, is, uh, coastal, coastal design, so, uh, we've been really happy with working with her. Um, the current structure is a single-family home built in eighteen-ninety. It's in the VE sixteen flood zone. Uh, we propose to demolish and build a two-story home on piles. Uh, the ground level is a space with stairs, uh, to the main living levels, enclosed on three sides with the open mover panels and breakaway walls on the garage door side. Uh, there are two stories of living space, uh, with five bedrooms, three and a half baths. Uh, we're proposing an enclosed sun porch and have adjusted the footprint of the deck where it extends beyond the boundary line, uh, to meet that. Uh, the designed flood elevation is two feet above the base flood elevation per Massachusetts requirements. And based on this requirement, the structure does, does exceed the building height limit by two feet.
Two inches.
Oh, I'm sorry, two inches.
Two feet, no.
They're wasting money. Uh, so the, the current structure we're in, we, we've actually been living here about a year. Uh, it's a hundred and thirty years old, and it's in dire need of repair, um, uh, I don't have to probably explain to you the details about a, a, a home that, uh,
I am neat, dying needs.
Yes. So we have four water features, I call them, that I, I can't get rid of. Uh, so, we believe that the Pardon?
That fish come in and out with those waters?
Occasionally, stranger things have happened here. So, uh, we believe the proposed design will fit nicely within the neighborhood and improve the aesthetic and value of the neighborhood while also conforming to the two-thousand-twenty building standards. And, uh, I don't know if you wanna walk through the plans or have us, uh, put them up, or?
Uh, I think all the guys have seen them, if you wanna flash them a little quicker, yeah, that'd be fine.
So.
It is a pretty house.
So here's the like, again, um, on Nut Island Ave. And here's the proposed house. So we'll be going up on piles, um, as we previously discussed. The three sides along the, the ocean side, um, will be a louver system to allow the water to flow in and out as needed, as uh, we know it happens, um, and this is the breakaway panel garage wall that we were talking about. Uh, the only thing in the garage area are stair access to the living space, um, and then the cars and a little bit of storage. Um, we're proposing, um, to, we're currently exceeding in this corner, we're over our boundary line, so we push that back to conform within um, our space, and we're proposing a, a three-season porch with, um, a deck, a, a covered deck above. Um, so quickly, we probably just wanna go to elevations. So this would be the Nut Island Ave side, um, this is the elevation from the city's land side. This is showing that we've, we've pulled back the structure to allow, the coastal dune runs right up to the staircase right here, so we've pulled everything back, um, so this is just the footprint of the house, just to give it room to come and, you know, as the tide comes and goes. And then this is the, um, ocean side, the beach side, and then the side you'll never see, right next to our neighbor, so, um, so that, that's it.
And, and we lived on the street, uh, you know, we moved six houses down, we got to know Eddie and, 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 you know, worked something out, and, um, we, uh, when, when, was it, two thousand seventeen with the bigger storms? We had big issues at our old home, and, uh, Ed was certainly close to having issues here, but, uh, from what, you know, he shared with me a, at this location, um, you know, for what it's worth, I guess, is, uh, he didn't have any issues, and all the storms that we had issues and flooded garages and mechanical issues, uh, he didn't have a drop, uh, surprisingly, it's uh, five and a half feet higher than where we were, which is, which is everything, so.
Right, you go swimming out the stairs if you have to, that's fine.
Dive right in.
And there you go. I used to go eel fishing right where your house is.
Where'd all the eel, eels go?
Oh, they're down there, you gotta, all that grass is starting to move, it's moving in the middle of the beach now.
Don't tell me that.
That's a ways away from you, it's, it's probably a hundred yards, but plenty of eels down there.
So do I.
Uh, it's a beautiful location, I live right up on the hill above you.
Yeah, we love it.
We love it here, and we love, we loved our old house, and when this opportunity came up, we, um, we just jumped on it, we, we, it's better for our family, we have two small kids that we just gave a bowl of ice cream to and sent them to the neighbor's house, and, uh, and they have room to run in.
You didn't give them a, you didn't give them a card for the, uh, what's that, what's the ice?
How many scoops?
How many scoops? Come on, Dave.
Well, they're only three, they, it's just three and six, they can't get there yet.
Oh, they can walk up there, how safe this can be.
I'm sure they did in the old days.
Yeah, they did, went out when the streetlights, come on, you went home, right? Uh, no, I think it's a beautiful home, I think it's really nice, very well thought out, too, uh. And I know you tried to keep the height what you could, uh, is the way it's laid out there, so all the different rules, it's really nice. Uh, I just wanna let the counselor speak in case he has another engagement tonight, and I'm sorry, Dave, I would've took you earlier. I didn't see you there till a little, few minutes ago.
That's okay, Mr. Chairman.
I could've grabbed you out of line.
Yeah, no, that's okay.
Hung in all night.
Uh, no, it's just, it's a beautiful home, um, I met Lindsay, uh, on the beach, um, during what we had, like, kind of a quasi clean and green pickup going on down there, and, um, talked a little bit about their plans. Uh, thought it would be another great home to have in the area, you know, raised up, just like we're doing on Post Island and some of the homes on C Street, and, uh, you know, just be a beautiful addition down there, uh, down the end of the neck, so, uh, I'm in full support. It's a great, great design.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for your time for hanging in. Uh, does anyone have any questions? Mr. Cavais?
I do not.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, not at this time, good.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Mr. Frankel?
No questions, all set.
Okay, uh, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? Counselor already did. Counselor, you can go again.
Certainly.
Uh, is there anyone else? Hands. Anyone wanna speak in favor? Second. John, you gone? Beautiful home in the water, John? John Rutherford?
He's good, he's good.
He's good. All right, second call, third call, all our part of hearing closed. I have a letter here from the DPW, September second, twenty-twenty, six Nut Island Ave, case number ZB A twenty forty-six. We reviewed the above referenced project, our comments are as follows. Will there be any fill or change of grade due to the development? Two, provide stabilized construction entrances and slope stabilization practices during construction. Three, provide utility plan for review. Four, a hundred-year flood pain boundary should be clearly identified on all grading plans. Five, the road pavement was repaved in twenty-seventeen, therefore, a street open impairment will not be issued until twenty-twenty-two. DPW will not allow any digging on the street until twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. Sorry, folks.
This should, there should not be any obstruction of water flow in the area. Building selection diagram shows obstructions of flow. Some forms of flow through foundation should be implemented to ensure that the movement and storage of food floodwaters are not affected. Seven, provide as-built plans upon completion of the project. An elevation certificate and engineering certificate for the VE zone construction also are required. Is anything further please advise? Twenty-twenty-two.
So, ca- can I ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Can't be opened for another, they wait five years before they open a street, but I know C two though. Gas companies and, huh?
So what does that mean for making connections for, for gas and sewer, uh, in the next year? Does that affect it?
Well, you're gonna have to figure that out. He's, he's saying you can't open the street till twenty-twenty-two.
I don't know.
Yeah, and then, and then all of a sudden, it's the sewers, and, and they gotta connect their gas and their electric, it's probably already ran there, and it's probably already on its property. And I mean, the shutout's probably in the streets, I'm, oh, no, there was never a house, yeah, there was.
Yeah, there was, the house went there several years.
I know, so maybe it's a connection for all that stuff on your property there.
All right, I'll look into that.
You can find that out, you can just call, call down and we'll figure that all out.
Call engineering.
Yeah, call engineering, they'll tell you.
Yeah, I'm sure McCarthy wants to speak.
Yeah. You, you can get a copy of this letter, uh, if you wanna just stop down tomorrow and pick it up, or?
Lindsay can email me.
She could, Lindsay, if you email us, she just stacks the copy right to you.
Will do.
Is there, uh, anyone else opposed or undecided?
Marty, Dave wants to talk. Marty? Dave, what's the talk?
Just wanna know if someone wanna? All right, Counselor, go ahead. You're up. Dave?
Thanks, Chairman. No, I just wanted, as you were talking about the street and the gas hookups and et cetera, I'll, uh, I'll help the Yardleys with that, with, with Al Graziosso and company down at, at DPW, if they wanna work it through me. You know, if they, if they don't know who to go to, but uh, I'll help, I'll help them out.
Thank you, Dave.
Thanks, Dave. Uh, Robert Clark? Opposed or undecided?
Yes.
You're up.
Mr. Clark, do you swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Um, I am on seventy-seven Island Avenue, I am in a butter. Um, I'm, I'm generally in favor of this project, and I think it's a great plan, and it's certainly a great site. Um, but the information available to us through the, uh, uh, city website, um, frankly, is completely blank in terms of the variances being sought. And as a result, I got a couple of questions. Again, I'm in favor of this, but I wanna make sure these, that I'm correct in my assumptions on these questions. Um, the original, uh,
You see that? Oh, good, good. Yeah, you're up.
The, um, uh, Mr. Yardley addressed one concern I had at the Conservation Commission um, about public access, you know, alongside his, his lot, which, um, I think everybody down there uses, and he addressed it, and, so that's fine. Um, but I assume the, the, the plan says this is gonna use the original footprint, you know, with minor adjustments, so I assume the dimensional variances that are being sought are no different than the dimensions that were there on Ed's house? Is that correct?
Uh, let me, let me see the, uh, I, I don't know, I didn't, uh, I didn't look at it.
Same footprint, so you would think it'd be the same.
Well. Dimensional, those are the, all the plans, yeah. Dimensionals should be... Got them right here. It's, uh... Yeah, they got, they got fifty foot, which they have a frontage, should have eighty-five, but that's what the lot is.
That's the way we...
Eighteen six. Uh, the existing's the same, that's the same. Everything is the same.
Good, okay. Well, that was my question. Um, there's one other question, and it has primarily to do with how the record is carried. And again, on the city website, uh, the current use is listed as one to two family, and the proposed use is listed as one to two family.
Single family home, residence A.
That's, again, I, I understand that, but if you look at the city website, it says one to two family. I want to make sure it says one.
Well, I mean, it could say one to two family, and then it'll say on the, on the, are you in A or B or, depends what's... It says rez-ze, which it is.
It says rez-ze, and then it says one to two family.
Well, it, on the website it does?
Yes, sir. And I, I'm not, I don't believe it's gonna be two family, but I want it, I want to record it properly.
Where on the website is that? That's what the commissioner wants to know.
Um...
They have single booming down, so that's the assessor she's talking about. The applicant wrote down single family.
Yeah, our documents show single.
Yeah, the assessor's website. It'll say... The assessor's website. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Marty.
No, the assessor's website, right. It's, it's one or two family, and then you put it down, one family. Because if, if it's residence, it could be residence B two family, and it all depends where it is. But she wrote down single. It should have said single right on it. It didn't.
Uh, this, the thing I was looking at was the Clearview site?
Yeah.
Where it shows the application forms?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not concerned that it actually is gonna turn into two. I just want to record it.
No, it, it, it says single right on it.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm strongly in favor of this.
Wondering what he's looking at that says, like, the Clearview site?
Yep.
What is that?
It's the site, uh, that came around with the letter that said, go have a look at Clearview, to see what they want to do.
I, I don't get the letters.
Viewpoint? Viewpoint?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Viewpoint, oh, okay. All right, I, I thought you said Clearview, and I'm trying, we don't know what that was yet. All right, view site, all right.
That was probably a typo. The application states single family.
Okay, well, can we fix the typo, though, just so it, it is done?
For the record, it's a single family home and it is recorded right here.
Okay, well, then I'm strongly in favor of it. I, and I'm, I'm pleased to see it happen. Thank you.
Very good, and thank you for your time, and thank you for hanging in.
It's a three story.
Yeah. All right, three story because of water. Uh, is there anyone else? Opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, second? Third? Call our part of hearing closed. Do you, uh, does anyone have any questions of the applicants, anyone on the board?
I don't.
Is there anything, anything you want to ask? No?
No.
Mr. Chin?
No, no questions.
Okay, great. Could I have a motion, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In matter number twenty dash forty-six, Lindsay and Scott Yardley, for a special permit front floodplain variance to demolish the existing single family home and construct a new single family home on the premises number six Nut Island Avenue. I make a motion to grant the relief that's requested.
Second. On the motion, stand on all in favor, roll call.
Chairman Akins?
Yes.
Michael Cavaes?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Jeff Frankel?
Yes.
All right, just a couple things I want to say to the Yardleys that, uh, the Counselor has big sway in this room, and I want to thank him for speaking twice.
Us, too.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Counselor. Thank you, Counselor, for keeping me awake.
You're the only one here tonight. Thank you. Everyone, uh, could we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
On the motion, stand on all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you, everybody, and appreciate you hanging in tonight.
Everybody take care.
Thank you very much for your applications, for your friends and neighbors and either or. Bye-bye, good night.